We're bidding about, need a motion to declare an open meeting?
No move.
Second. Secondly, declare an open meeting, all in favor of saying?
Aye.
Open meeting's act is supposed to open the door up here. Hold call, myself, Wyatt.
Present.
Justin.
Present.
Chance.
Here.
David.
Here.
Yes, I'm here. Approve the agenda. Motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Agenda is presented.
Okay. One second. Move the second to approve the agenda, all in favor of saying?
Aye.
Motion carried. I will turn it over to Bob. Up in front of the room. In front of the glass. Alright. So. This will be fine. So, thank you all for taking the time to come here this evening. There's a lot of activities and things going on that you've chosen to use. Hopefully, I'll keep you to an end. That's what I try, at least for my portion of the agenda. So, I always try to promise for those of you who are giving up your time outside of your regular visiting, your family, your kids, whatever impact you have. But, the goal today is to kind of recap a little bit of what we've done so far. Introduce you to some new team members that we now have on board that we didn't have on board last time we had. And then, talk through the process and get to a point where we can decide on our regular meeting schedule and how we're going to go through this process and where maybe a potential end date is. So, obviously, a lot of this process started with CWP coming in and doing the facility study. And a lot of what you've seen in the survey that we asked you to do is built upon some of that knowledge. And we're going to go through the responses to that facility study. And ahead of that, I'm glad that you guys already had the opportunity to tour some other schools. So, you've had a chance to see what some other school districts in your regions have done with past bond issues. But, the new piece tonight is we have a CM that has been selected, Hausman Construction. And I'm not going to introduce you guys. Go ahead. Come on up. You can introduce yourselves. I want you to talk a little bit about your role.
I can consider if you get to sit with me.
I'm Steve Teal with Hausman Construction. I've got Jeff Bernacher, John Weiser, and then Mark Munford with me. Excited to be part of your process here in town. I'll talk you through the process in which we got on board a little bit. So, we have to go, we're a little bit different than Bob and Tobin and his group that we have to go through a little bit longer process to get on board. So, we got from the school district, what we call our cluster proposal, and responded to that with our resume of similar K-12 type projects in the area and with our team. And then, ultimately, they invited us to come into the committee's building committees. So, we were able to introduce ourselves and answer some questions. And ultimately, we're selected through that process. So, we actually built a few of the projects that I think some of you all got to tour and wait and roll over at Summerland. So, we had success in the piece of brass skin. Already we have work. Hopefully, helped you to price tag and scope this project here down so we can be successful. But, anything I missed after all, take one with that down?
No, that's good. You have a lot of opportunities. I have to address the group.
Yep.
But, having Hausman on board is, like I mentioned to you, the last kind of big corner piece of the puzzle to get the team together to really start to get us to a position of a clear vision of what our ask might be. And Tobin might talk just a little bit too, and certainly more later, about, you know, the funding structure. He's already addressed us a time or two, but now his role will start to become more clear for us as well.
So, as Mr. Rall kind of mentioned, I would say there's like three legs to this school. Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
The architect, my role here is to help you see kind of vision, floor plans, renderings, help drive the scope. Steve and his team and Hausman, their role is to talk about constructability, phasing, cost, as we look at options. I'm going to take your feedback. I'm going to interpret it as to what I best feel meets your goals architecturally. They'll price it up and bring those numbers back to you. And then, Tobin's responsibility is essentially to help you understand that fiscal impact. And he's going to speak a little bit to the finances today in a broad sense. Eventually, we'll get to a point where as we start zeroing in on some dollar amounts, it'll get more specific. But, I think it's helpful for you, while the survey today didn't deal with costs, that is the next thing. And I would hope by our next meeting, we're going to start showing you those potential costs. We've had some of that as a facility study. But, with the survey, that's going to help me start to narrow down and hopefully pull some things back that generally, we have broad consensus that, you know, this is probably something we could consider, but maybe it doesn't. That's going to be my goal of working with user groups to get to that point. So, those three legs of the school are now in place, architect, construction manager, and fiscal. So, to move forward then, and, yep. So, the survey that you all took, we split it into two groups. We had the school staff. We had 27 responses from staff members that we had earlier in the week. We gathered all those responses. I documented them. And what you see up here, so this is what I see on my end, and you can scroll through. I'm going to talk you through the numbers. You don't need to see the exact little numbers. But, in general, as you slide down from question to question, you're going to see on the left-hand side are the number ones, on the right-hand side are the number fives. And you start to see pretty clearly visually where things are weighted heavily to the left, you've got a lot of support. That's something that I would say if we're going after potential bond, there's a lot of strong support. Where you start to see the red bars pretty even across, now we're starting to average out at about a 2.5 or higher. Those are things we're going to have to talk more intently about. And then, when you see things weighted to the right side, the fours and the fives, those are things that we shouldn't be spending an exorbitant amount of time. It either means that's something that the school board can handle outside of the bond, or there's just not strong rationale from the group. If you guys have done tours and looked at the school facilities, there's not a lot of support. So, I want to focus on those things where we know we have strong support. And then, we're going to have those discussions about some of those things that are in the head. Okay?
Can you see very well right here? So, for example, this one is consolidate the two existing media centers. Consolidate the two existing media centers has, you know, the strongest, you know, towards the left-hand side. This one is construct two new pre-K2 classrooms connected to the existing elementary. Existing rooms would be repurposed, so existing pre-K would be repurposed. So, 19 of 27, we're a 1 or a 2. Construct a new daycare room connected to the existing elementary school.
This is one where I said we're going to have a discussion because it's a pretty even bar. So, we've got people on both sides of the spectrum.
Is this all survey or just staff?
This is staff.
Staff only?
This is staff. I will tell you generally, you'll see it. Because I, the next document I'll probably have to pull up is the word document. That shows the averages. So, what I do then is I take these, all these responses, I can put them into an Excel spreadsheet, and I can average them out. And I did that for just the staff responses or just the committee group responses. And then, I blended all 51 responses. We had a late response in, I see we have 25 now. My cutoff was before I had to get in the truck to leave about 3:00 this afternoon. And at that time, we only had 24 responses. Don't worry, give her that 25th person, we still have your response. It'll get averaged back in and will reply back on this. But, we're going to do this process again, and we're going to start interjecting costs. Because it's one thing to say, just as a broad idea, do you support this or not? But then, the next step is to put dollars and cents in front of it and see if that support weights. And you will see things move based on cost projections. But, this is part of the process that I find helps so that people can understand, I don't know if it'll happen with the daycare. For example, yes, the community needs daycare. Boy, I really feel strongly about that. But then, you put a price tag to it, you think, hmm, maybe we need to not include that because that might be something that moves us to a point where the bond becomes so big that we're going to lose support. And then, you don't have a successful bond. So, that's the goal of your committee. We want to get through this process. We want to find logical ways, sure as one tool that we use. We're going to have discussions. So, hopefully, you're talking in group. If you're not, I want to prompt you, make you talk. But, that's the goal. We need to have open, honest conversations about what should and should not be part of a potential bond. You have to be willing to discuss in group. And then, furthermore, if you really want to support a bond, the communities that are the most successful are those who are not afraid to go out and have conversations outside of the school. You have to be able to engage the fellow people in your opinion. I can't do that. I'm not as trusted of the source as you are. I have my role as an architect, but when it comes to talking with people in the community, we will do public forums to put the information out if and when the school board elects to put for the bond. But, those communities that are successful, take individuals like yourselves who are willing to donate your time here tonight, to go out into the community and help talk about why did we get to this point in the bond? Why did we include what we included in the bond? Okay? So, let's jump to, let's jump to the word down there. And I'm going to go line by line through these questions and just show you the results. So, for your knowledge, since some of you are a little farther away, where you see green as a highlighted color, that means generally universal support. Green would be anything that is averaged out at a 2.5 or higher. So, on a scale of 1 to 5, if I can get the group to say it's better than a 2.5, so between a 1 and a 2.5, I colored it green. If it's yellow, that's a bubble kind of, we need more discussion. 2.5 to 3.5 is yellow. Anything beyond 3.5, there's not a lot at this stage, and that'll change. But, anything that's kind of an orangey, red color, those are the things that generally this group all said, yeah, we don't want to waste our efforts talking about that issue. So, the very first one was? Basically, close the street, right? Do we have some more for closing the street? So, the left number is the staff, middle number is just the committee, the right number is everybody. So, that's all 51 responses that I had as of 2:00, 3:00 today. Strong support, you know, blended out average, 1.55, that's a little stronger. Consolidate the media centers into one centralized room. 2.06 is a blended average. Committee didn't feel as strongly as the staff, but you're really close enough. Okay? Construct two new pre-K classrooms connected to the existing elementary school and repurpose the other classrooms. Committee actually felt stronger about that than the staff. We averaged out below a 2, 1.96. Construct a new daycare room connected to the existing elementary school located near pre-K and kindergarten. This one's on the bubble, right? Staff thought free, committee is 2.6, average 2.84. Create two larger kindergarten rooms by renovating the current elementary. Staff 2.41, committee 2.17, you averaged out as a 2.29. And as we go to, we may tighten up the range. Maybe instead of a 2.5, keeps you green. When we go to the next stage, it might have to go to a 2.25 above. We'll see how that plays. That's, this is part of the process we're going to use as we want to start defining overall project costs. I use this as a tool to help us decide where is the strongest support, right? So, we may get to the end of this, and we may be trying to keep the things that are at least a 2.25 above. But, for today's purposes, 2.5 above the group. Provide additional special education classroom space as well as spaces for those specialists, OTPT specialists. Staff were to 2, committee was at 1.75, 1.88, strong support. Special education usually drives strong support. And that is something that a lot of schools with some of the state mandates, just schools weren't designed for those special education spaces when they were built. Provide a paved parking lot on the east side of the elementary school. Staff 2.89, so they were yellow, but the committee was 2.08. You average out just above 2.5. So, that's another bubble item. Keep and renovate the original 1920 school building. Nobody in this group, staff or committee, thinks that's a good idea. So, I'm not going to entertain this part of this discussion. Okay? Everybody good with that? Demolish the original 1920 high school and replace it with eight new classrooms and new spaces for boys and girls wrestling, capable of getting two full practice mats. Strong support. And we'll see, because I also split out some discussions, I think, about wrestling later. I would imagine the stronger support to that is more about just eliminating the 1920s and less about what is the exact replacement. That's what the rest of the questions are trying to draw. Relocate the existing van storage garage east of the current wood shop. Provide more convenient access. You'll see this in the facility study plans when we laid out some floor plans, that van storage. Without survey, I don't know how close it is to my proposed plan. But, if we need to keep it there, which this is telling me it needs to be discussed, it might tweak my plan. It's definitely something we can do. It's just oriented a little differently than how I'd like to get the floor plan out. But, between committees and staff, you're all saying that doesn't seem like a place to spend money. And I think some of that's because it's very new. Provide new open commons to allow students to gather space for before or after school or gathering space for spectators of athletic events. This one gets both school bubble, it's 73, it's below 2.5, but it's on the higher end of those questions. Provide a new fitness area that can also be used by the public outside of normal school hours. Between staff, rank that a little higher than the committee, it's still average staff to the 3. So, I don't think there's as much strong support for that. But, there's also not a lot of strong support for a fitness area that would be utilized by students and staff only. A little bit stronger support here, but that's telling me that between staff and you as a kind of a representative group of the public, don't see the need to open your doors for a fitness area within the school. Construct a new full-size competition gym along with associated concessions and restrooms. This is a bubble item. Staff 3.04, committee 2.67, you average out to a 2.86. Construct an elevated three-lane walking track. Staff 3.7, committee 3, average out to a 3.4. So, we've got weird kind of something that's over my limit and the committee that's maybe still saying, well, let's at least talk about it. So, we. Consolidate the number of entry/exit points to the school facilities by creating a new single K-12 entrance with secure rest field and consolidated administrative offices. Pretty average support here, 1.7, 1.6, you have to go to a 1.6. So, I think that speaks to safety and security in trying to get to a singular entrance for your facility. Construct two additional junior high guest locker rooms. Staff at a 3, committee at a 2.29, you average out to a 2.67, so that's a bubble item. Technically, I guess that committee one could have been a little green. Construct a new centralized art room for both high school and elementary and bring the old classroom into a pottery room. I did have a question that came through in the survey about should we explain why the pottery room is needed? If you look at the facility study, art currently does pottery, but they do not have the space to do it. So, all your pottery wheels live out in the corridor when they do pottery. So, if we were able to relocate art to a more convenient space in between the elementary and high school, the thought process was pottery could still function within that space that art vacate because we already got the plumbing and essentially a setup to facilitate a pottery room that you then wouldn't have to put into an art classroom that might be more elementary-focused and general art-focused.
So, many years ago, the kiln went bad and the ventilation system went bad. I don't know when that was, but it wasn't important enough at that time to our art teacher. Says, you know, I can live without that, live without a pottery unit. There's lots you can do in art. We can just kind of let it go. And so, it was let go. And nobody, you know, pressed to bring back pottery into our art curriculum, you know, until new teacher comes in and says, boy, I sure would like to, you know, I like this. It's important to me. I think it's good skill. Well, okay, so we invested in a new kiln and a new ventilation system in the original space. But, the pottery wheels, as you know, take up space. And so, that current existing art space, which is entirely too small for a K-12 art room, is just right for pottery space. So, that discussion was had months and months ago that, hey, maybe if we do this centralized art room for K-12 art, because we have one art teacher for K-12, we could leave that because that would be a high school unit, a high school activity, a high school piece of art curriculum. So, there could be essentially two art rooms, your centralized general K-12 art space and your high school clay and pottery space, which is, which would be the existing art room.
Okay. Construct new accessible classroom spaces for van and vocal units currently presided in a singular classroom, as well as the space, the accessory spaces they need for instrument storage and practice rooms. Staff rated that much higher. They were the 2.48, if committee was at 1.58, you average out at a 2. And again, that might be a decision or further discussion as to whether it's two rooms or one. I would tell you from a educational design, most of the time, there are two spaces because they just kind of have different functions.
And Bob says higher, 2.48, but that means less support.
Less support among staff.
Yeah.
And you're making, yes.
One is higher support than two.
Construct new shop classroom spaces for the CTE career technical education that are attached to the main high school facility. So, this would mean consolidating everything to the singular campus. Staff are just above a 2, committee 1.5, average out 1.8. Strong support there to try to get everything consolidated. If we flip that and say, hey, leave everything where it is, maybe we just renovate them in their current locations. 3.37 for staff, 3.14 for the committee as a function of the group, 3.26. So, still a discussion, but generally not as strong a support. So, if we had to pick one versus the other right now, I would say I could be looking at plans where we're pulling all those functions under one roof and not having kids walk back and forth. Renovate the target gym to enhance its use for performing arts, meaning providing some better acoustic lighting and sound system while still maintaining the current gym tour. Staff 2.37, committee 2.38, and it's almost identical between the two groups. Provide new corridor connection to the east side of the current gym where the locker rooms are by relocating the fitness room. So, that would allow us to put a cut through for circulation. Because currently, students either have to walk through the fitness room or the gym. Staff saw that as above a 2.5 to 2.63. The committee ranked that at a 2.33, you average out right there about a 2.5. There are some things in this list that are going to be somewhat dependent on others, right? If we decide within a new addition to build a new fitness area, well, then obviously, we free that space up, and you could consider this. If we decide to eliminate the new fitness space and say, fitness needs to stay where it is, well, this one might have to go by the wayside too. And it stays as is, right? And that's an option sometimes. No change is still an option. It doesn't eliminate the issue that the school is faced with. But, I could also read into this and say, well, the staffs are the one that have to deal with it more on a day-to-day basis than this committee. And they don't seem to think it's as big of a deal as the committee group does. Okay? That's how I read that. Invert the existing high school media center into two new classrooms, requires relocation. So, we would have to create a singular combined media center space in order to free up the high school media space to then backfill into more classrooms. And again, as we talk about taking down the 1920s building and needing to find eight classrooms, again, you know, those could be two of those eight. Utilize multi-story construction to conserve space. Functions such as a fitness room or wrestling rooms may be located on the second floor. And I specifically call out functions like a fitness room or a wrestling room because there are potential accessibility considerations that come into play with a two-story facility. Spaces where you could make an accommodation, for example. A wrestling room where we have a practice facility on the second floor. I can make the argument, make the case to the state fire marshal that you could make an accommodation if you had a student. Because you don't always have students that need different accommodations for accessibility. But, let's say you did have somebody who was injured in a car accident, and now they need an accommodation. You could always take a wrestling mat and put it in your current gym on first floor as an accommodation and not be forced to put an elevator to get to a second floor to arrest them. Now, if we put classrooms on the second floor, it might be a different story, especially if there's classrooms that you can't make an accommodation. So, that's why I specifically called out wrestling and fitness because we could make accommodations or make that argument, and that might have a fiscal impact from a design standpoint as to whether or not you might need an elevator. Okay? So, that's why I called out. But, generally, for multi-story, you can see we're in the green, or single-story accessibility, we're in the yellow. So, yes, it's a consideration, but from a site standpoint, I don't necessarily disagree based on the property lines. And if we're trying to link things, a multi-story solution can be done. And I think it can be done at a cost-effective way. So, knowing that there's higher numbers here, we're in the threes, or trying to keep everything on the brave, makes me want to continue to look at two-story buildings. Renovate the existing science classrooms to provide new millwork, plumbing, ventilation systems. Size of the classrooms will change. We did have a question about if we could add some windows in there. That is a possibility. Generally, strong support here again. Staff were to 1.85, committee at 1.66, averaged out to a 1.76. That was the end of the survey. So, last thing I want to do, if you could go back to the committee. One, and all the way to the bottom where we had some additional questions. I want to just make sure we address. So, I gave everybody the option at the end of the survey to say, hey, did we miss anything, right? Because normally, in my process, I would want to push it back to you first and say, brainstorm, you've toured the facilities, you've seen what other school districts have done, you've seen your own school district. What are the types of things you would want to prepare? Well, I kind of front looked at this process to say, we already have a facility study. A lot of you have seen the book. You've seen what the staff have said. So, we front looked at a lot of these questions. But, I didn't want to ignore if there were other things that came up. Like, for example, we weren't doing any of this in the kitchen. But, it was never really raised as an issue back then. So, if you wanted to say, I think this kitchen, kitchen is an issue, we can add it to the survey. We can add it as a discussion point. So, just some of the comments that came through. Overall safety, storm shelter, parking lots on both east and west, main entrance on the west and athletic entrance on the east side. So, they're just reiterating kind of their idea of, hey, let's make sure we're focusing on safety, parking issues, which tonight's a good example of, I show up and, man, you guys have a popular JBT because it's hard to find a parking spot. Yes, but instead of two wrestling rooms for practice, maybe one with three mats, have girls and boys rotate practice in the morning and after school. So, that's a consideration somebody wants to throw out as far as maybe the size of the wrestling spaces would be considered. Would it be possible to keep the wrestling rooms below ground level and the classrooms at the floor level with the current building to save on space or elevate the wrestling to conserve space? The plans that we put in the facility study did assume wrestling would be on an upper second floor level. I wouldn't go down because you end up with so many more issues of putting people in a basement and life safety, egress, things like that, where it's from a code standpoint, a little nicer to put it up on a second floor than down in a basement. It is possible. I just would recommend to you that if we want to do levels, we could go up in that level. In favor of third gym in the 1920 building space, not for spectator use, only as a practice gym with a wrestling area built above and modified two-story building. And this is something that wasn't necessarily an option for you as a committee, as a choice, because we specifically kind of said competition gym. I have this discussion with a lot of communities when it comes down to, do we need? One, do we need a gym? Two, should it be practice? Or three, should it be competition? So, if we want to entertain that as part of the discussion going forward, Hausman does a good job a lot of times of helping us isolate what the cost differences might be as long as I can give them an idea of where it might go and how it might look. I will tell you, generally, competition gyms are roughly 12,000 square feet anymore. If you're really trying to put wrestling mats and have three mats in a gym, what you have now is closer to 10,000 square feet, which is a typical 100 by 100 foot square for the era in which that gym was built. Newer competition gyms tend to be a little longer. You see a lot of 93-foot basketball courts or 94-foot basketball courts instead of 84-foot basketball courts, which are standard high school. But, the wrestling has really driven gym lengths in the last five to 10 years. A practice gym could be anywhere between 7,500 to 8,000 or 9,000 square feet. So, that 3,000 square foot makes a big difference when we talk, is it just for practice or is it for spectators or we got out room for teachers and the like? So, definitely with that coming up, it's something we could put in and at least give you a cost option to do the survey again and then we see and then make that distinction going forward. Where will buses load and unload? What about improvements to the football field, press box, additionally, varsity locker rooms? And will lunchroom remain the same? Do you want to handle bus loading and unloading?
Well, that probably will come after we know what our project will look like. Yes, I mean, we could conceivably have bus loading and unloading on both sides of Woodland. You know, this group, I mean, once you get them into a pattern, they know which direction to go. Could conceivably. We only have three routes right now. I don't anticipate us going to four. So, that would remain to be seen likely still this side because the bus park is going to remain where the bus park is. And so, there'll be some configuration that will be a turnaround, some type of big circle where they'll go back the way they came likely. But, those options will be determined when we know where these bigger pieces are going to be to fill in this space.
Improvements to the football field and press box? Yeah, at the time, that just wasn't part of the... Improvements to the football field and press box, yeah, at the time, that just wasn't part of the survey. We could put it in the survey. My guess is we're going to be working to pull stuff back, but.
Your school board, when they passed the budget this last month, decided to kind of set that outside of this conversation. And any press box additions or renovations or replacement would just be taken care of through the special building fund over the course of one or two or more years. So that's kind of left out of the, the board kind of made a decision to just leave that out of the bond conversation.
Additional varsity locker rooms, so we were kind of intentional with JV locker rooms or junior high locker rooms. And that we have fairly decent varsity locker rooms today. We could always size them to be comparable, but when you're looking at, you have your current varsity locker rooms and we need additional space for visiting teams or JV, they do tend to be small. You don't tend to give them as many amenities as what you would do for your varsity.
Most schools today do not combine if they don't have to, seventh through 12th grade in the same locker room. Our locker rooms are very busy. Now, we did invest quite a bit to restore them about eight years ago because they were original from 1975 and they were pretty disgusting. Kids pretty hard on things, especially locker rooms, especially boys. So your school board invested quite a bit to kind of restore them to new about eight years ago. And so your varsity locker rooms are pretty good, they're just both very, very busy. And our guest locker rooms are the dungeons under the stage. You know, not great. And any of your coaches could, would be able to share with you the experience that we have at other schools, where do they put their guests? So the idea of maybe junior high slash guest locker rooms, smaller in scope possibly than what we currently have, would be more cost-effective than two new varsity locker rooms.
Last one, will the lunchroom remain the same? Yes, under the current plans of what I have explored, we really didn't get a lot of comments about this space other than it'd be nice to have a space for indoor recess, which you can't use this space for because it's a lunchroom for majority of the day. So this doesn't really function as a gym. That was a lot of the discussion that drove the facility study plan when we showed another space for a gym because it does give you some more of that freedom of having the two spaces so that whether you have high school classes doing PE or a need for indoor recess, you don't have that right now with this room being lunchroom. Okay, last couple of comments, would like to see space presently between the schools used mainly for classroom space, new locker rooms, media area, new activities entrance, administrative rooms. So those were the comments that came through. What I'm doing now is, you've seen some of the numbers, I'm going to open it up just briefly. What do you guys think? You've seen without money being an object, are we missing anything still? Is there something that we didn't bring up that you think needs to be addressed as we move forward into refining some plan options and refining some budgets?
I'd like to look at, so if you don't want to support things, where the lunchroom concessions, the office of your principal commons area is, and that, do it all in one shot? Where you share that room to eat for concessions and what you're bringing, kind of like summer living, kind of like bring it off floral, go. Then you renovate this room instead of adding on some.
The only downside to that, unless I move this kitchen, when you're serving lunch, it's still a lunchroom. Because even if I walk kids in here and they grab their tray from here and then walk to a commons area, I still can't. Yeah, and that is more expensive to move a kitchen, it's an expensive endeavor. So I don't disagree with the concept, it is nice to have, it's going to be a budget consideration to have to relocate the kitchen.
So conceivably, you know, Mr. Tarr, if we flipped this, kitchen's there and we go that way with commons space because there could be a gym on the east, so commons is there, gym is there, that could also be lunchroom. So you could, an architect can find a way to make any work, you can keep this kitchen, you can keep this kitchen and go east with your commons.
If you put it that way though, you wouldn't have to tear all this out for a big hallway and you wouldn't bring high schools into the building.
Yeah, I'm going to make a question on that, where would you get the livers?
If the kitchen didn't really move like Darren's suggesting and we just flipped it, you could conceivably try to keep the livers further off.
But if we combine, that's more close. But I do agree with Darren, I think it'd be nice to have it, if we're going to do this whole common area, I think it makes sense to have it all in one spot instead of having to face two sets of areas with the same purpose.
Yep, okay, good, what else? That's all the discussion we have, we're doing good.
Anything on the results you saw that struck you as unique or special or, I mean, because it's kind of, you know.
I'm not a math person, the whole thing seemed upside down to me.
The what seemed upside down?
The number seemed upside down to me.
Oh, one being the best and five being the worst? Just flip it.
I know, I did, but.
Maybe that's the ultimate, I want those to come in first.
I guess I'll keep talking, I think the daycare side, obviously I'm a big proponent of working on it, we brought the school board into it. I think that question is asked without ever showing any numbers to anybody, which is a lot of this. And you, like you said, it wasn't an option because you front-loaded it all and we never got to talk about as a group except for the first time today. We've met four times, we could have these conversations.
So what's the benefit to putting a daycare on the school? I mean, now is the time. Yeah, let's have that conversation because we're going to keep hoping on this stuff and we're going to put a number to it. If we have a square footage of the space.
Can you tell us what, just say we put a, I don't even know how big you have it, the size maybe, but what do you think of it? Compared to maybe school buying a house and employing someone.
So generally, what I would tell you, the daycare space that I programmed in is not much different than your typical pre-K or kindergarten classroom style. And it would take maybe a little further discussion too to know what age groups and how low we're going. Because if you start to get too low, you start limiting your student to staff ratios. Like if you have infants that can't walk, it's a much tighter ratio, you know, it's like one to four versus when you have kids who are mobile, that moves to one to eight or one to 12 on different age groups. For this one, it was kind of a one-room space, over 1,000 square feet. You know, if you were roughing that out at just an average of $400 a square foot, that's 1,000 square foot, it could be as much as like $400,000. But it's a commercial property and it has to meet all of the Department of Health and Human Services standards, which is why I would say sometimes just buying a house isn't the easiest solution because you still have to bring those facilities up to the standards. You can at least, you can't in the city of Omaha, if you do daycare, you have to have a storm shelter. You being outside of the city of Omaha, the code does have an exemption for strictly daycare facilities to not require a storm shelter. At least if it was part of this project, you would have a storm shelter, I expect. Anytime I add classrooms, I'm required by code now to incorporate storm shelters into the new construction. So that's maybe a benefit of keeping it at the school, you would have access to storm shelters, you would have, I have better support from staff. The caveat is, is it a partnership, is it just the school running it? You know, you're maybe working on, the school is a property, but the city runs it, and a lot of those details would have to be hashed out as well. But if I was spitballing it, and I'm not, I'm an architect, not a contractor, although I saw it kind of not even, I don't know. I mean, yeah, it's more than a house to build as part of the school.
It's more a house, but the, all of the convenience of it, how they set.
The second reality is that you have to plan. So let's go to the bike. We did think through a little bit of how could a daycare go with some potential renovations and additions to the school? So let me orient myself here. We are in, yeah, north of.
We're right there.
Yep, right there. So the north end of this facility, in this plan, would have two new pre-K classrooms. It would have a daycare space, it would have its own dedicated entrance. So then when you have pickup and drop-off on this side of the facility, and I'm showing pavement and different pathways to do it. But you could isolate that early childcare function on the north side of this property with its own entrance and exit for pickup and drop-off. And it complements the age groups on that side of the building as well. So this is part of the rationale to saying, hey, do we vacate the computer lab and the media center? Do we pull kindergarten and pre-K to that side as well as sped? Sped is already in that general location, but we free up with music, moving out some additional space for sped. So that's the initial concept without a lot of feedback from you as a committee.
You said something about storm shelter.
We would have to have.
So does that one have a storm shelter or would be, I asked a question.
It wouldn't necessarily have to be the daycare piece itself that is the storm shelter, it could be. We just have to have a facility that can accommodate five square foot per occupant of the building. So generally, classrooms from a building build standpoint, occupancy build standpoint, I get one kid for every 20 square feet. So if I have a 1,000 square foot kindergarten classroom, code tells me I could have 50 kids in that group. And I have to provide enough square footage for that to the kids. Generally, it's a little less than that. Usually if I'm doing a high school classroom at, let's say, 800 square foot per person, 800 square feet, 20 square foot per person, every four classrooms I build, one of the floor needs to be a storm shelter.
This is, I'm going to say the daycare. The voting up there wasn't very supportive of daycare here. I just wondered, that's just a huge question about paying deals, about daycare anywhere opposed to here. I was wondering, if we follow up and how we can help people need a daycare center here. Maybe they might understand what it feels like to be a lot of negative, few, a lot of people need a daycare in person.
I could come up with a lot of reasons that I hear in other communities. One, it is a benefit to your school to have a daycare, especially on this type of your facility. You're trying to recruit teachers and younger teachers that are generally coming out of college and still looking to start a family. You're going to be way more competitive in having those opportunities for people who are coming out of, in Omaha or wherever, claiming for their education and looking for a place to land. A lot of communities that have gone to that model or at least provide something within their community do tend to see, let's say, an edge, a competitive edge in recruitment of younger staff. That's one option. There's a lot of different ways to answer that.
And I noticed that the community, that you guys are more supportive of a daycare than the school staff. Now, I had 24, 27 staff members respond to the survey. Without knowing who those people were, if I had five more respond to it, it could have changed that number dramatically. If I had five more elementary, young, female staff members respond to it that didn't have a chance to or take the time to, whatever. You know, so I think, you know, I wouldn't say, oh, it looks like a daycare is kind of off the table, you know, I wouldn't.
No, I would say it's a competition. What I think, you guys as a committee need to have that discussion to say, boy, the survey didn't support it. Do we need to, do we need to do something to see whether or not it's just a file?
And the survey that appears, it says that we do need to have daycare for daycare. So who's our main?
Yeah, there's definitely a need, that survey is. You know.
And I don't think taxpayers can.
Yeah, there's a need for it, but whether, the next survey of, okay, we'll provide it, that's different than, we know everybody, no, I think everybody argues that there's no need for it.
In general, if this is the bottom of the school building, it, you can say, the taxpayer is paying for it, right? Even though it might not be run by the school, but they are providing the shell in which it can operate.
Jimmy, this is one of the items that is going to pay a lot of cost, whether we incorporate it or it's going to put us over.
Yep, and that would be, if I were to generalize that the staff is like, okay, this, the school functioning facilities are more important to us than something that is for the community. They let the community take care of that. I don't, again, I don't know that, but they know that this, all of this is not, this is your 50-year solution, your $40 million. Something's got to go. I would guess the staff would apparently make, well, we'd rather have this, but don't we support a strong one?
As of today, the only thing I will tell you that I am not considering is leaving the 1920s. That's the only thing where we've said, yeah, clearly, that's got strong support amongst everybody to say, no, something.
I think we have to force it.
Yeah, the yellow is just a bubble, it's, that's the point of why I made it yellow. It's, you need to have that conversation as a group, but eventually, we want to try to get this group to come to some form of consensus. It won't be unanimous, it rarely ever is. But you at least need to make the arguments as the subsection of your community. You're the test subjects to say, can we get enough support even amongst ourselves to justify putting it in the bond? And if we can't, it should be in the bond. If we can, you make that recommendation to the school board, they still have the final consideration as to whether or not it should be part of the bond. But that's part of what this process is trying to, trying to do. I, I know I would love to give you absolutely everything that's on this list, but reality tells me there are things that will sink a bond. And I'm trying to utilize this group to help find where's that balance? Because ultimately, finding the balance is what helps communities pass through.
So I think the consideration of the daycare is it could be self-funded, I mean, it could be profit generating, but it could also go the other way too. So, I mean, you could sell it as, hey, it's, you know, people are going to pay for daycare and it's going to all pay for itself. But then also, and how you manage it too, it could also go the other way and then now the school has to pay.
So, to be continued. So, good conversation, I want to make sure we get to Token because he's got some numbers that I think will help you as we push this forward into the next phase of starting to interject costs. And, you know, what I'm starting from is the plan that you see on the screen here from the facility study. And I'm going to be modifying this based on your responses. And things like, okay, I need to leave the shed, the roof shed that's by the wood shop now. If I got to modify something there, obviously my welding shop would open into that shed if I left it in place. So I can get a plan that will work and leave that. But what I'm going to be doing with Darren and pushing information back out to this group, you'll be seeing plans, you'll be seeing the same survey, but within that survey, I'm going to start interjecting cost ranges. So for example, the daycare, I might say it could be between 300,000 and 400,000, right? Depending on a lot of decisions that would still need to be made on, you know, how big is that classroom? Is it just one room, is it two rooms, are we doing infants or are we just doing three and four-year-olds, right? So there's things yet to come, but you'll get those options. So it turns over to Token, so we can talk a little bit about finances.
I know you're anxious to really get into the financial impact and things like that. We discussed whether all that at once tonight or part of the initial prioritization is sometimes too much. But it is going to be time to start folding that in, especially in our next steps. Some of you heard when I started last time, I think we talked a little bit about this, but I want to revisit just some fundamentals of the district finances and how bond issues today are handled as far as valuations go and bond levies go. We'll come back to this and make sure it's well-understood as we start to look at project costs and tax impacts. But just to give you some updates, even from last time we were together. So the district now has a new certified valuation for the entire district. So it's all the property, ag land, everything in the district that's assessed against to generate the dollars to operate. The new district valuation is just over a billion dollars. So if we just prove it has a billion dollars, what that means is when the board taxes for one cent, one cent levy on a billion dollars, that's going to bring in $100,000 to operate. So that's how your normal school taxes and the way things are today, that's how that works. For bond today, and I think we mentioned this last time, it's a little bit different. A law went into effect in 2022 that reduces ag land from what normally has been about 75% of market value it's assessed at for taxes to 50% of that appraised for market value. So we're going to have an entirely different bond valuation to determine that tax levy. So as we start to incorporate that into the discussions, I just want this group to have some. So as we start to incorporate that into the discussions, I just want this group to have some fundamental knowledge regarding that. So if one cent for your regular school levy brings in $100,000, the LB2 valuation is right at about 800 million. It's a little bit above that for the purposes of just starting to draw these comparisons. If valuation is a billion and one cent brings in 100,000, but the bond valuation with that ag land reduced is 800 million, then a penny brings in $80,000 per penny. So what that means is the bond levy is actually pushed up a little bit or elevated. And what's occurring there is through the requirements of the taxes, the burden, if you will, is being shifted somewhat off of ag land onto everybody's property, property in town, commercial property and property on the farm that's not ag land. So as move forward to talk about the, the bond levy, we're using that LB2 valuation number. Just last thing on this for tonight, you'll get more information as we go forward. We're going to utilize kind of current market data as we go through this process of these discussions. If you're paying attention to the markets, you know, the feds reduced rates last week, 25 basis points. The indicators that we're discussing says that there's a high percent chance that may occur two more times this year. Not saying it will, but that's the anticipation. And then potentially four times throughout 2026. Those anticipations, those discussions start to impact bond markets somewhat. So we may update these rates as we go forward a little bit in this group. But at some point in time, as we start to put out information to the public, we kind of go with that current rate at that time and the impact it has on all, all these discussions and tax impacts. So today, just from a high level, with these valuations that I just discussed, if you were to do a 20-year bond at the current 20-year bond rates, let's say they're around 4.3, 4.35%. On the valuation I referred to, that 822 million, the board would have to levy about .9 cents per million. So if you ran a $10 million bond, it would have a nine cent bond levy. If you stretch that out to 25 years, now your rates are going to go up a little bit. You're going to have five more years of paying bond payments. It drops it to about .8 cents per million of bond. So that $10 million bond would be eight cents across your valuation, your personal valuation instead of nine cents. And then 30 years only drops it to about .75. Because what I'm starting to see is the longer bonds are having quite a bit higher rate besides just the extra years. So at some point, part of the discussion might be with the board, what do you think your community would prefer? Shorter bond that's going to have a higher annual impact or a little bit longer bond that's going to cost more total dollars and interest to taxpayers over a longer amount of time? And how much can we save for you to make that worth stretching it out? So I guess that's just a little bit of a financial initial teaser or information that we'll start pulling in and associating as you start looking at different project sizes, different potential bond amounts. Want me just to finish up with the timeline?
Your own rules.
All right. And I know, so you're very, you're starting a process here and this process is going to take some time. I've seen Bob's process and been a part of it with, with the other people in the back there. You're starting to learn information and pull new information in and work towards potential consensus. Last time I was here, we talked about a potential timeline for a bond election, probably sometime next year. If this process ends up resulting in an actual bond election. At that time, I think we said maybe we were trending for a March election. If you work through this over several months, that was a month at the time we spoke, we thought was available to, to people to run an election. We've since learned that the election laws have changed a little bit. Something got attached to a bill that a lot of people missed, maybe all of us, everybody involved in this process, including bond attorneys and school organizations and all of that. So the actual possibilities for 2026 to hold an election are January of 2026. I think everyone here would probably say not the best time. February is another option. You would have to call, the board have to call the election sometime in December to do that. So maybe, but I think things would have to really roll and come together pretty quickly. The next opportunity is the May primary. So that would be a polling place for sure, I believe, versus a mail-in. And some, some counties are doing all mail-in, but you would be potentially probably polling place. Then it's July as a special election that's probably mail-in or it's November. And so I don't want to go too far in the weeds. If you run something in July or November and it is successful, the board can't put on the tax levy for a full another year. And so we're probably all working towards deciding that is it going to be February or May? And there's probably people here already thinking, one feels more comfortable or makes more sense than the other. But to say, to set it today, reading the state or is an election already today is not true. But those are kind of the timeline, probably possibilities is February special, probably mail-in or the May primary polling place.
It used to always be in an election year where you had a primary and a general. They blocked out the months of the primary and the general, May and November, and then the month on either side. The change in the law took away.
Couple other months.
Couple other months beyond just.
March and August.
Wasn't on the outside.
The unicameral is, it has been constricting your ability to make local decisions about a lot of things with regard to funding schools and bond elections are one of those. And so we, we really don't like it, we being super attendants and school boards. We really don't like the unicameral telling the board, limiting the board and you, what you can do with your own school and making decisions about your, your local school. So, and we anticipate potentially, you know, some more of those things, just making it more difficult for you and limiting your decision-making about funding your school, including bond elections. And so we're, we're just increasingly nervous, you know, about, about where they might go with that. This isn't a huge deal, but it is another way.
Imagine every community in the whole Nebraska that has to run a bond in May or November. Now you're all competing for the same contractors. So instead of you having a February or a March and the next guy has a July, which would seem, and I've, I've been involved in a lot of different bond elections that are a March or a July or, we just had Brockton pass theirs in September this month. It spaces out the, the pool of people working on it, even myself, having the ability to go to multiple communities on different timelines. So there's benefits to having that flexibility. The downside is maybe less competition.
So maybe the last thing I'll share is as you go through this, we'll try to make sure we package information, either have a handouts and things available or giving you access to a calculator, your working groups. As you start to look at amounts and tax impacts, we want you to be able to incorporate that into your discussions and your prioritizing and working toward consensus. So we'll be folding that in here probably at the next meeting and going forward.
And I will work with Darren to provide everything that I've shown you here today. I have no problem giving to you as a committee and it's in a public hearing anyways. So that's something I'll work with Darren to get out. If you want to be able to reflect on those numbers or after this meeting, since I'm not handing it out, we can definitely do that. But by the next meeting, again, I want to have another survey in place. So that's another kind of agenda topic is frequency of meeting. Tonight's a Monday night. Is that a good night to continue to meet? Generally my pace, if you want to have a February potential election, we need to be meeting every two weeks to get through the process to where I would say by mid-November, we're able to have an intelligent conversation of saying, we feel like we're within a range and a number of projects. Right? If we can get to that point in mid-November, that still gives us the flexibility kind of between Thanksgiving and the first school board meeting in December to have one more meeting if we have to. But if you want as a group to be able to say, we want to vote in February, then we need to be meeting every two weeks.
Do you know the difference between mail-in ballots and voter vote?
Yes and no. There was a lot of information put out during the debates on, and it wasn't necessarily this year, but even the year before when they were looking at restricting ballots. One of the arguments was that there's either more fraud or less participation in a mail-in. Actually, it's kind of the reverse. We tend to give more participation in a special where it's a one-issue ballot, if you will, versus a primary where people may or may not be as motivated to turn out. I don't have the numbers to show you that, but that's what I've seen. Yeah. Tobin can talk.
Mail-in ballots see the trend, 60% to higher participation, number of registered voters voting. Primary elections are probably 40% below, just depends where you're at sometimes, but the general a little bit higher. Success versus failure.
Yes, there you go.
It really still depends on your unique situation and your needs and how your public perceives that and all those kind of things. There has, none of us have been able to lock down data on what the magic time, the right time.
This is exactly what you need to do, especially for different every time.
And I felt to mention that for a May primary election, I think all your work would need to be done and the board would need to call the election by March 1st versus like a December.
So that's the difference, whether or not this group feels like you want to keep it a pace where you'd be ready to make a recommendation to the school board to say, yep, this is the project. This is the dollar amount. This is what we think you should go forward with. That either needs to happen by December or you give yourselves a little more time, like Tobin said, that it needs to happen before March 1st. And I put that question to you. What do you feel is the right pace?
So would we have a two-week stop? Were you talking or are we listening to you? Nothing's bad, listen to you.
No, I would, I need you guys to talk. And again, I've been talking for almost an hour, but it's part of the process of feeding you the information and starting to get you to understand why I ask the questions I ask and how I analyze the data. And eventually, yes, it should be more of you talking to each other. Absolutely. Because ultimately you're the voters, you're the patrons in the district, you're the ones that need to have your, your finger on the pulse of what will or will not be halting to blame you on playing your school district.
Do you think that it would be beneficial to run this QR code in the paper and let the general public? Did they report to this survey?
Generally, no, I've done that in the past. I don't think this is useful because you can't guarantee who else is going to respond or that they don't pass it out to people outside the district.
Do you think it would be worthwhile for us to make this available at parent teacher conferences this week?
Do you think it would be beneficial?
But more than, more than better. I mean, even those survey results, we should be able to figure out where they, you know, it's outside your area. I, I could address it if you were able to.
Those are our family and we could capture them here.
Yeah, we would reset. I would reset the survey and anybody that responds after today's date would obviously be a parent who came to parent teacher conferences. At least then you know they're in the district and you have it put it out publicly where anybody could respond.
Why don't you just make a copy of this? It should dip all over the area of the community. Is that what you said? Then you have a committee briefing staff could maybe have parent.
That's what I mean. If I reset it, it'll clear what else is comments, but I could still aggregate. But then we know that that's the parent response.
Same question.
Same questions, different. And technically, if you wanted to do that for other subgroups, if there was a way to guarantee that we didn't just publish it in the paper where anybody could respond, if you had a focus organization that you could give this QR code out to?
Absolutely. If we're, if we're going to, if we take that data and, and use it to steer decision-making, I wouldn't be comfortable with that because you don't know who took it. Just, just like I mentioned, you know, our staff not supportive of a daycare. I, you know, five different people, five more people take it and that could have went from yellow to green. And we wouldn't say, well, I guess that doesn't have support. I don't think we should come to that conclusion. I, I think capturing our folks that come to parent teacher conferences, we should take the time to take a survey. We know, and we know who all attends because we, we track who's here.
Yes. You know, that could, you might see the daycare come in and you would obviously think, boy, you have the parents, they have kids. They want that to function. But at least you have that data. But you're the decision makers. I, I wouldn't know that about the program. Just anyone to take this. I, I agree with that.
Bob, you suggested the frequency of meetings every two weeks would may work. Would us, me without you guys help? I eat, talk, I'm eating a passion out of myself and I want to work a really good job.
Jimmy, I've never had a group volunteer do that.
Yeah.
I would say I'm not going to stop you for a bit of trouble.
See if that's something that's been done in the past.
Or even if it would help and you would just have us, you know, join via Zoom or something and listen in so that if you want to talk as a group, but you ask a question while you're meeting. I, I, what I would tell you is I've never had a process that goes 100% identical between community to group. And I want you guys to do what you think is going to help you make decisions and come to a successful resolution as a committee to decide what's best for your school district and your community and ultimately make that recommendation to the school. So if you want to meet weekly as a group, you might not get everybody, right? But I think that's up to you. For our process, for knowing when we can have Tobin and Houseman and myself available, that would be every two weeks. That would be the, the natural comfortable pace. Because sometimes we'll get to an end of the meeting like today and I have data and I have direction from you to say, I want to see what happens if we move the kitchen. I need time to go back and actually make those plans. And then Houseman, Houseman needs time to interpret those plans and put costs to it. So that's where I say, I'd love to meet every day with you, but it's not going to be productive because just some of this stuff takes time tomorrow to crunch through the numbers to get the plans adjusted.
I know what I think, because there's several few years that I haven't wanted what you think really. I mean.
And I would hope that everybody, this is a committee and I want you to not feel uncomfortable. You've seen some of the results. Not everybody agrees in this group. You've got people that have ones for a lot of things. You've got people that have fours and fives. But unless you voice your concerns, whether it's the thing you're most passionate about, like a daycare or the thing you're most adamantly opposed to, like formats versus three in a restroom, you need to say it. Because if you're thinking it, guaranteed somebody else in the community is thinking the same thing.
Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, I still don't know if I'm picking up on maybe how we don't visualize what this looks like going forward. But I guess going forward is not just us standing up here talking, but you start to get into groups, discuss it with each other, sharing that information out from your groups and having those kind of conversations as you go forward. So I don't, I don't know if that's what you're asking or trying to think about how this looks going forward. Sometimes it's just us helping structure that or prompt it and recording that, those discussions and feedback. So it drives, but Bobby's go back to work with on design concepts. So how is Ben can start to put new and updated numbers to those designs as you guys all work through that going forward? So I don't know if that's helpful at all or not. Every meeting is not us standing up here and you guys sitting and waiting for you to talk out. There's a lot of working groups and discussing with each other and then sharing that stuff out for everybody else to hear and respond back to and somehow measuring that data to drive the next meeting and the content of the next meeting to continue to go back to work on that and move things forward.
Working groups should be.
Yes, that's, that's where it's going.
I didn't know. What we'll try to do is just like today, we got the survey out to you on Sunday and then we met on Monday. So short term, but I can have the modified survey out earlier so that you can do the survey earlier and then I could, through Darren, get you the results. So that when we're here, you'll have already seen the results. And instead of me just resharing what the results are, now you can start talking as a group where, oh, okay. Well, I see the daycare moved from a three to a two. Good, what changed, right? Who's, who's been able to improve? Or, oh, I see the daycare moved from a three to a four. You know, obviously, once we put a price tag on it, that changed some people's opinions. So that, I agree with Tobin. That's, this is not intended to be me standing up for an hour or two talking to you. You're going to interact as a group.
So if you have meetings every two weeks and obviously there's going to be large discussion, there's going to be small group discussion. If people are going to get questions, they're going to look for answers. Where do they direct all that, all those questions and all those inquiries to? Is there a?
Well, I, I will walk around.
I mean, do they, do they have to note it down on, note it down and then come back to the meeting?
So I brought giant pads of paper, which I'll bring every time. That's normal what I do. I hand out pads of paper and markers. I do. I hand out pads of paper and markers. And you guys are like little secretaries in groups of four or five to write down your ideas. And then you share that. I don't share that. You talk about, we look at the survey results and these are the things that jumped out at us, and here's how we interpret it. You share that with the group.
I mean, these, these questions that they have, they, they all, they bring them every two weeks. So they accumulate a bunch of questions and discussion. And then every two weeks, they're going to meet, they're going to be here. So they relay all that. And then they won't, they'll get the response back when they come back in another two weeks?
Yeah.
So it takes about a month to get a question answered?
It does. That's why I say, these processes aren't meant to be done quickly. And it's a big decision point, too, even for you as school board members, to, to look at running a potential bond. So sometimes it's good that I need time to react to your conversations because it also gives you time to reflect. A lot of times, your immediate response, when you go home and sleep on it for a night or two, you'll think of something else, too, that maybe you hadn't thought of while you were in the group. So it is a process. It's not meant to be a fast process. Because I, I don't think you as a committee or even the community as a whole would like to hear that, hey, then when the architect, at the end of September, they push forth the bond October 1st, right? Where's the process? How can you, how can you argue and make the point that this is the right thing for the community?
But Joseph, are you saying we have a meeting?
Yeah.
And it takes a month to be reached? Two weeks?
Well, if you, if you meet every two weeks, as you know, so you, you leave here today, you guys have a bunch of discussion. You formulate all these questions that you want to get answers to. If you meet every two weeks, and in two weeks, you'll be back here, then you can present all that, all those questions and have more discussion. And then you won't have the answer to that question until you come back the next week. So if you do it monthly meetings, it's just, now it's going to be every two months. It's going to take you two months to get your answers versus one month, relatively. Because that's your communication.
So if we have a question, can you discuss it with an answer?
Depends on the question. Like, we had the question today, what about a daycare? How much is that going to cost? We can give you general answers. But if it's, what does it look like if I take the kitchen and build a conference? I need to be able to put that on the plan and put it up on screen with you. So some answers, they can get immediately. Some answers, I need to go back and formulate the response or build the vision of what you're asking. Okay. Do we have any general feeling as far as the timeline? Does this group feel February is the Google, although fast? Or do you feel like May is a better timeline?
I personally think May is a better timeline, just because some of the older people aren't going to vote, and a lot of those are maybe their voters. I, what do the churches that said voting, elections?
More likely, February will, they'll be available, right? They'll, they'll make it available. They won't have polls, as we've been told.
Yeah, that's up to the county clerk this part of the election.
It'd be a mail-in that they, yeah.
Drop it somewhere.
Your options is we can get that somewhere.
Next year's, so you have the primary. So you will have, like, in May, you have four points.
Yeah.
How many other schools do you have that you're?
That are targeting May?
May or February.
You're the only one that I have targeted. Why not still think in a potential May right now? I don't stake Pierce's right now. They have formulated a path for when they go along again.
I can put a mail as a priority.
I've had, you've heard experiences on May and mail. I would not trust any of you. I mean, you, there is nothing I can say that I can guarantee with this.
Three responses are hearing for May.
Here for May.
Well, I, I would not vote more against the mail-in vote right now.
Yeah.
I, there's, I cannot trust the mail-in vote so far. It is terrible.
Is, is there, is there a downside to having the February intensity, but yet having the day?
No.
So I wonder if you have a February intent plan, or then assess this as, because of December, you have to call it?
If you wanted a February vote by December.
Right. So I think when you get closer to December, then you can decide if that's even reasonable.
Sixty days.
At least have that intensity.
That's my recommendation is go to work. If it just lies together and doesn't make sense to pause for six months, talk about it. Otherwise, May's probably what it's turning toward. Let's just go to work and see how things, things, things lay out. If you have strong feelings about the mail-in and all that at the time, then that's going to be part of that schedule. So that's my advice for what's worth.
I can tell you, I think most part of the mail-in vote, they got the last September fourth minute and they were speaking.
Yeah, we're going to mail, and we tell people, if it's within ten days, maybe that's not long enough. So drop it off. If you want it to be counted, better go take it in yourself. I've got a proposal on the table that I'm now putting forth to the group. Plain view is a very popular school with a lot of activities during the week. Would anybody be opposed to meeting on Sundays instead so that we can avoid school after this?
Do the board members have to come?
We, we have school activities on Sundays.
All, all of them have to go on Sundays.
So what day works best for you as a majority committee?
Mondays.
Mondays are fine. And they don't have to be more.
Yeah.
But our, our board's kind of in May since March.
Yes.
But they would have to.
We're pretty close to my base.
Yeah, okay, that's important enough for the town.
So they have to make the full decision.
I have to say that last time.
So you, that's where you have three board members.
Yes. If it wasn't an open board meeting, at least three board members are still vocal and telling us our decision. If there's only three of you that it's not, it's a public board. More than that, and it's just like.
Very common for a couple of board members to come each time or kind of rotate. Very common to do things that way. Here's a resource, answer questions if people are curious about what happened, what was this here, what did this happen? At the end of the day, this committee has no power. They have to come back to you as board and make a recommendation. And then you as a board need to decide, from what the committee said, and those of you who participate every time, what you heard, or do you want? Because ultimately, you call, you set the language, you set the number, you call your question.
The daycare has been a huge item of discussion this evening. I see the city administrator and a few city council members. There was a large plan for a community building that would include a daycare. Where does that?
Depends on the school, depends on the law. We can't make that decision most of the schools.
So the original plan was for a community center to inhabit it.
Correct.
See, I think a lot of people are confused about which direction is city slash school plan of going with this. So the city had a plan long before this bond discussion ever started to have daycare included.
Only not the city, it's PBC. It's a city.
PBC.
The city didn't have.
Oh, okay. Oh, PBC. So that plan goes away.
It's there, we need it, depends on the law.
Okay.
We significantly reduced.
Because why would you assume?
Because that one had a big turn. If that had all this space.
Basically.
Without the law, I mean, this, this was a very big project.
It was.
And then when the discussion of this started, just with the finance of how that would work and how this would work, that group decided, let's maybe scope that down a little bit. We'll see how it works through that, see how the school works out. And if this works out, then that's all donated money to PBC. You know, they have to come up with a lot to do what they want to do for town. So we reel that in. We might, we might go have, might go have a little of that space, a little place for people play, hack the ball where they can pick the ball and stuff, and then have this as well. That's the kind of idea.
You know, here's why the city popped that, is because the PBC absolutely can't hold that. So they actually came to us, went and donated money. We purchased it on behalf of them. So it looks like it's the city's, but they still have the actual board through models.
I can expect all donations to come from each one of you.
And Bob, with the daycare, so like, you work with someone in Laurel and the work with school security, did they ever propose a daycare? They, you know, was it part of their bond or was it ever talked about?
No.
Or did they hold it down?
It was not part of their bond. Laurel did theirs at about the same time as the construction of their school, but it was, again, a separate partnership. The city bought, bought the location, and I believe the school kind of helped fund it with staff, but the school didn't own it. And again, that's what that community did. I was working in Skyler, they had a grant to do it as part of one of their kindergarten, first second grade facilities. They ended up switching super tenants and never went forward. But I had where I looked at it, taking their old bus barn and converting it to daycare. It's a common topic in a lot of communities, and it's always a little different. No, I've never seen it proposed the same way every time. And I don't say this to influence anything. When you ask the question, Newman Grove ran one bond issue that had daycare and pretty sizable, call it BoWAG facility, and it failed. And the feedback they got, this was quite a few years ago, so the daycare issues probably continued to be difficult for communities. Feedback they got was that means not be part of the school project. They took the daycare off, reduced the scope of the ag facility in the past. So is that what you're asking, just what other schools?
Yeah, I'm just curious, committee, what has actually, you know, made a part of their plan? Has the guy, you know, what they got, pulled it up or down?
I think cropped in at some point in their process. There's a time when everybody thought the federal government was going to force districts, I think, to incorporate daycares. So they were trying to figure out, we need to be planning on that as it ends or it's out. And it's not, but it was part of the early conversations with them as well. So a common, common issue, I guess, for communities.
From my perspective, the daycare thing is kind of more of a city issue, not so much a district issue. I guess for those of you in this room, like, what age range are we thinking of a daycare? Because somebody presented the idea, and I know that the community is hurting for daycare, but what age range are we, are we expecting for this daycare associated with our school?
I guess I'll just say, me personally, I think if you're going to do daycare, if you're going to find, if you're going to find someone for three years elsewhere, why would I break into school to do daycare? I just, if, if you're going to do it, am I?
So zero on a, so they can notice.
Which, which does make my plan a little bigger. I'll tell you, what I crafted in the first round is not zero to four.
Because you're a pocket.
It takes more room and more staff.
If I remember correctly, Jen, correctly if I'm wrong, it was that we were discussing having a three-year-old daycare and the convenience of having a daycare, or a three-year-old preschool.
Free school.
I'm sorry. And the convenience of having a daycare attached to the school, even for those four-year-olds that are going to regular preschool. And also convenience for the parents that are picking all of these kids up. I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, Carter. It makes a lot of sense. That was where the initial idea came from.
Because even that, though, is if you're going to stay open to five, you're going to close the school down. Like, I, I think all of this daycare thing, you're never going to get a discussion on it if you don't know logistics. Who's running it, how it's going to go, who are you going to hire, is it a school run? All that, I think, has to be loosely known before you even discuss this because I would never go forward if I didn't know. But.
And I think a lot of the older people are going to go toward you, but they're not going to know.
People I talk to, you don't understand why they should be, I don't want to say penalized, but they have to pay for daycare. But it's not really part of the school. And they don't understand that the problem is, you know, that you make some.
My, my big concern is, I feel like we have to do something completely different than what Pierce, McCook, and Moses others.
Cable.
They all failed on the same day basically. So what are we going to do different? So argue with it. And the people I talk to, Pierce, the biggest reason it failed, the few people I talk to, is because they tried to add that extra gym. And I just.
Every, every school in every town, every community's got a different set of needs, different circumstances. So, yeah, I think it's worthy to see if you can, depending upon who you talk to, you're, you're going to hear different stories about why it failed. But, uh, but I, I think it's wise to study that to a certain degree. But the, the bottom line is us telling our story and convincing people that the, the recommendation you've made to the board, that they likely put forth to the voters, is, is necessary. It's a necessary burden for the future of our community, for the future of our school. You know, so that's, that's the goal anywhere. It's maybe some of it, you know, maybe they just didn't do a good job of telling their story and knocking on doors and, you know, marketing the need for it. Because it'd be hard to find real similar, even though you're, Pierce is right down the road, you'd think that we would be just about identical with them, but, you know, we, but we really aren't.
But I think it all comes down to that. The taxpayers are just flat out getting tired with the taxes. I mean, I remember that Pierce, McCook, K, which that's, I mean, that's a pretty wide demographic, and they all failed.
It comes straight down to the bottom line of, you know, ninety percent of the land area, there's two million license, obviously, growth out. And that bottom line is about ten dollars a neighbor for being black or red. So that's overall what we're dealing with. And that's why these bonds aren't passed, because there's just not enough money to go with. And, yes, we have to take care of our kids. So we have to figure out.
Spread the needle.
Yeah.
And I would also say, I think this survey should be spread out as many people as possible. Because I think if we just need, and I think parents are a good thing, but I think it needs to go outside and further the path. Because I guess in my discussion with people, I've talked to about over two hundred people, the gym especially, it's been, I maybe talked to ten, ten to twenty people at most that said that they want that. And I think it's, like, the numbers that our survey and the teacher survey have not affected anything that I've seen them talk. So I'd be curious now if it gets out to a big, general demographic in public, if I'm just talking to a bunch of old people that don't want to spend money or invest.
I think part of the problem with that, though, is a lot of the older people do not understand the shape the school's in and what the school needs. And so it's hard. My big selling point is this is a safety issue to get the street closed. I mean, we can't say that there'll never, ever be somebody who will run those barricades because there's a lot of crazy people in this world, and this town is built. Or a sniper sitting down at that corner waiting for you to come out across this building. That is a big safety issue in the school district.
Do you ever double the player? I'll do it. It's, it's the same, same, you got same, same.
So the girl, when you came down the street with me, you called up your ladies. They loved me, but they didn't know anything, did they? They, they truly didn't. Not because they were dumb. It's just that they're not involved in this school. Most of them were girls, and they did not have.
Yeah. If we open, if we open the school every Sunday for the next six months for people to come and walk through, guess how many folks are going to come up?
I would imagine.
You know, I, so I, I mean, I, we pushed out that survey and put it on Twitter, we put it on Facebook, we put it in the paper, we had it available. And the amount that took at the evening of the facility audit, the difference between the amount that took it that night and had taken it over the course of the next month was about twenty people. Yeah. So, so I, I mean, I agree that the more feedback, the better. And we can also gauge, you know, put one in there, who are you, what's your demographic? I think that's important to know.
The key for this group, especially if we're talking, let's, let's keep a, a quick pace, an every-two-week pace, but let's focus on May. What that's going to allow you to do is get to a solution in a reasonable amount of time, and then it will allow you to have additional meetings with those groups to where then you will have something physical to be able to say, these are the needs of the school. Come with me. You know, we'll plan some dates when you're getting into the bond promotion. Once they call the election, we're going to have a couple of presentations that days where we will open them to the public. And then it's incumbent on you, the, the members of this committee, to start telling people, hey, there's a meeting up at the school this Sunday. Make sure you come. If you want to know what's in the bond, if you want to see the school, make it be known. It takes you guys talking to your, your other peers.
Yeah. Vicki, I was just going to say, talk about people not knowing. I mean, that's, that's what we want. You guys do, that's what we're doing. We're telling people. If, if everybody's got the same facts and they have their different needs, that's fine. As long as everybody can understand what reality is, that's what we want. But Hausman, I mean, that's a big part of their plan as well. I don't know if everybody understands that. A big part of this process is getting the bond passed. And when, when they came and gave us their pitch, they outlined how they're going to do that, and they've got a plan. And the other companies did as well. It's a big part of the process. So they're there to help for that, with that. But that's kind of all us. It's not just getting them here
It's not just getting them here, but it's in your serendipity or at the golf course or wherever. We're talking about it.
This is why I'm hesitant to throw the survey out. Just not because they know that. I'm saying, not as basic as you will, to be making some of these decisions based on your discussion.
So, no, I understand that. We send out a different link to a survey? Because if anything that survey may tell you is what do they not know? So by what you guys know and the story you guys have heard, I mean, you understand the need or you've seen the need even in schools. And you start seeing a stark contrast in a community survey, well, then that tells you where you need to hit. Maybe send the outreach to, like, oh, they don't understand that this is the need. When your numbers are much different with theirs. So, I mean, there might be a benefit of looking at it in the opposite direction than taking their numbers for what they actually mean.
We wouldn't reach a demographic of folks would be left out because they couldn't take the survey on here.
Crofton printed stuff out, took it down to senior centers, had to fill it out by hand. And then we input it into the survey form. So there's ways, yeah, there's ways to circumvent that for those that don't understand.
We could provide a paper copy on Thursday if we thought, maybe we want to capture that. The most encouraging part to me, and I'm glad we're kind of starting to get some conversation going. There seems to be overwhelming support from the survey and the folks that were in the gym in April, from you and from the staff to connect the schools. Okay, to Vicky's point, minimizing risk. We can't eliminate all risk. Minimizing risk and inefficiency. So that's encouraging. And that's a lot of space in between these two now. So that does open up, okay, you know, a more broad scope of project to capture all that space in the middle. So, you know, I think that's encouraging. I think that's some clarity to say, and I think it's more reality than not, that we're gonna create it when we're a school. Now, what do we want those pieces to look like?
Yeah, that's the next step. So, if we stay on Mondays, two weeks is on October 6th. So that's what we will plan. And I know it might not work for everybody, but just keep in mind if you can't make it on the 6th, we're gonna be in it two weeks.
You're making six o'clock.
I think six o'clock.
Six o'clock because we have folks that come from the city.
Where are we meeting?
At night, we should be good in the media center.
Are we in the media center?
Yeah, we don't have to be at the school. Media center.
Media center will be available that easy. And we'll have all of them to organize this activity.
So, I know you have some more stuff on your agenda, but that's what I have for tonight. We'll plan a meeting in October 6th. I want to start interjecting Boss with Houssman. That'll be the next phase of the survey. We could put the survey out without Boss, just if you guys want to see the reaction to some other groups as well.
If you get clarification on that, unless it's possible, unless it's already proposed. Is February, May, and November present a chance?
Those would be your options. It's February, May, July could be a special mail-in election. Or November.
And is there something about six months?
If you fail the bond.
If you fail the bond, so if you fail the bond in February. You still have November.
Yeah, after August would be six months.
If you fail in May, it's March here.
Potentially. You can't go from May to November. Unless it's a significantly different project. It's gotta be deemed a different project run as an year than that. When you get into an odd year, so if it gets back into an odd year, you could call it any month. It's gonna be a special and it's gonna be a mail-in, I would say.
So we couldn't do it in November if it fails again?
We could.
We could.
Right? No. Think it falls a couple of days shy of six months now that I, now that I recall.
But we're not planning to fail.
I want to bring one more point up. I just said in the county, uh, or in the county board, we just went through Anlo County and we raised, our county in Anlo County raised ag in twenty-four percent in one year.
That's true.
That's going for this year, I don't know.
Pierce, last year, Pierce carried the whole thirty percent.
And on top of this now, I am speaking on behalf of the rural families. There's a lot of them that don't get this information and be able to build this map. And we've built a bus our direction. And most of these families are very young. It could be very crucial in getting us through. So, the more involved we get them, I think we'll be a lot...
There will be groups heading up by Houssman, by community outreach personnel, that will be getting information, I think, for us to plan you throughout the district as much as possible. If you think there is disconnect there, let us know and we'll get the information there. Process is gonna just get started.
Yeah.
I understand. Another big hurdle there, and exact direction unfortunately that had gone to Creighton. And Damon said, board of election members slash yearly said, we're not voting, that's a call west of here. So, just some possible rules that...
Just get us a notebook, so we have information to go everywhere, make some out.
Have you ever heard of House of War, any of you in Brunswick? Hey, great news for community, I'm a close team.
I've made arrangements with Jen Murat to host an event in Brunswick at, anytime. I thought maybe better maybe get down the road a little bit, but I'll be happy to do that at any time. He offered to kind of help organize that and to be part of that. So yes, I'm keenly aware that Brunswick could be a hub for Anlo County voters to raise and not, and of course, community folks. And that they deserve the serendipity treatment, which is I'll come sit at a table and visit with those folks and listen as much as talk. But they probably just say, well, what do we, where do we at, what do we need to know, what are you doing?
So in preparation for our next meeting, what you will likely see is another survey for you as a group that can interject some Boss, you'll see some floor plan options. We'll get that out at the end of the meeting so that I'll bring physical copies for you to review in the meeting and discuss amongst yourselves the pros and cons of the survey results. That's the focus of the next meeting.
Could you add a cost for us if we could add, could you add that to the...
A total cost?
If you could put your kitchen here and put the comments.
I want to look to the guys in the back. John, can we have a cost for, I gotta give you the information. You got two weeks to...
Probably pretty quick, we need Bob to draw something for us. So I think if we kind of get a base plan priced up and then get that presented to you.
The short answer is, I'll make sure we have enough to have an intelligent conversation. But the conversation may drive some additional changes. Or may decide, no, we don't even want to do that. We will come here and discuss. Okay? That's all I have for tonight. I gotta take off.
Yes.
And no?
Yep.
All right, well, we've just got an action plan.
Down the needle, I'm attempting to see if this goes. They do, I told her.
Girls wrestling?
I know Houssman already created this night.
So, is there any further discussion we haven't talked about? So in the last twenty-nine or...
Yeah, so now...
So you want... So you got all that now, so that'll be next month. This is the first one that I have next month. Tomorrow's the next one. So thirteen, fourteen. We're making the service show. Sorry, that's what we're doing. We're all preparing this as well. We all know. Not over...
Red girl, dress lady, and all the girls, and all the girls wrestling.
I'll make motion. You're entering for the cross, that's the out. Boys, boys, ladies. For the... You know, correct exit sixty-two, you have a second. Jane, do the second, and there's a girl's wrestling, and what is girls' wrestling? And boy's girls' bowling, twenty-five, I saw. We'll follow those. Yes, Wayne?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Chance?
Yep.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay. Take a motion adjourned?
I'll second.
Second adjourned, I'll take a second.